At pleasurable ease and stood the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
All right, this is the Whitman Planning Board meeting. Today is another date.
Twenty eighth.
November twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Attendance's chairman, Adam Somerville.
Vice chair.
Vice Chair, Lane Burdrum.
Wayne Andrews. The meeting is being recorded.
It is being recorded, yes, sir.
For the purpose of taking minutes and to be put on the town's cable station.
All right. First, we have Mariana Estates. They would like to release lot five in due development, bringing a bond check for the amount from Ross Engineering for the Form L. Anybody have any questions?
They were in here previously?
Yeah, how long?
Two meetings ago.
Two weeks, yes.
Two meetings ago.
Yeah. So we outstanding the good branch check for fifty-eight thousand nine twelve twenty to withhold the bonds and finish everything left on the engineering.
How much have we leaving?
Fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents.
That's the remainder, that's not.
That's what they'll be bringing a check in to cover the bond contingent down through being released of lot contingent on that check.
But there's still development to be done.
Yes.
The road isn't getting done.
Yeah, everything on that is, that's the Form L. There's some Ross Engineering, if there's anything else that needs to be done. It's too much to read. Be here all night.
So. So they're going to give us a check of fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
And we can't, we're not releasing any money at all?
No, just a lot.
Yes, just a lot.
Just a lot for that check?
Yes.
So we're still going to have money?
Yes.
With the way prices are going up, hardly much profit.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion to release the lot?
I'll make that motion.
I'm second.
Motion by Lee, second by Wayne. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? Unanimous? Is Tyler here yet?
I don't see him.
Okay.
He's on, he does have a commute, so I'm just assuming. I haven't heard differently, so.
All right. This goes on last day, the owner's here for six forty-five Plymouth Street, correct? All right. So we have six forty-five Plymouth Street, residential type of structure, existing in-law accessory apartment. Catherine Diaz, Lisa Diaz, let's see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, have a good night. Does not say if an application has been filed with the clerk. No appeal, previous appeal has been made. Section of relief which by law, section of by law of which relief is requested, section twenty-four C six point six, existing in-law requesting special permit on the new owner accessory apartment. That is all I know. Does this come with that?
No, it's kind of, this came with it.
Yes, yeah.
On your follow-up, our conversation considering the proposed application for six forty-four, forty-five Plymouth Street for a special permit. For this particular case, please accept the submission of copies of two thousand one site plan prepared by CWG Company of Closer to meet the requirement of plot plan signed by registered surveyor. I'm looking at the exception to our general requirement for a new plan based on the phases two thousand one plan submitted by the ZBA approved the previous special permit for this property. It is not proposing any changes to the site from the ZBA's previous approval. All right? Any questions? What did I say then?
Because when somebody finds a property, they have to re-apply.
So they have to go to zoning board. And they all look very bare, it says they just want to.
They just want to be known.
Really, yes.
And then?
And yes, I had the same thing on my mother-in-law when we bought our house. You have a lot to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and we recommend approval to the zoning board because it is an existing condition. You know, ownership being where that no one can be used as an in-law.
Motion by Buck, second by Lee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, I guess we're just waiting on Tyler now. I'm sorry for the delay.
Justin, I have a question for you.
Sure. We probably stop recording until he gets here, no?
Oh.
I would say.
Well, is, what's it related to? Is it related to planning board material?
No.
You guys can probably motion for a quick recess.
Make a motion to recess until the presenter arrives.
All right.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Tonight, tonight when I arrive here.
We are recording.
Okay, there we go.
So, ah, we now have bad planning group with Tyler Maren. This is the presentation.
Yes, so thank you to the board. Thank you for your patience. Sorry about the confusion. But essentially, there's two main tasks for tonight. If you recall, or not at your last meeting, but the last meeting of yours I attended, I presented some compliance modeling around a potential MBTA communities district, several sites. We had a nice, robust conversation about, you know, what the board might prefer to see. And so in the intervening time, I've come up with a modified scenario based on our conversation that I think is looking pretty good, so I will show you that. And then the other thing is to begin to, you know, once we've sort of narrowed, you know, the potential location a bit, to start talking about the actual regulatory need a bit. Both the kinds of dimensional regulations the town will need to decide on and the other, gone through your existing bylaw and taking a look at any potential areas of conflict or concern that you might want to get money on. And then just talk about what is next. So, um, I don't have a, let's see. Connector. As I was saying, I don't have a super, like, presentation this time, right? As we went over so much stuff last time, I'll just show you. The places.
Left hand side, the other, behind, yeah. Thank you, Justin, somewhere.
It's warming up. Okay, look at that. Okay, I'll start talking about this little abandoned view. So if you recall, I showed you, I think, like, three distinct sites. One being downtown Long South Avenue near the MBTA station. And as a reminder, you do have to have some of your districts near the station, but not all. So there's some flexibility. And I think some of the direction I got was, it's probably a good idea to just continue, like, concentrating in that area, so. So before, I think, the district looked a little further that way. Went over here, added a bit of land in this area. And I think the most significant addition was, you were asking to take a look at this parcel up here on Pond Street for potential inclusion, so I added that in there. I initially modeled the location with some existing apartments on Myrtle Ave. We decided to scrap that. Then the other site was over to the west along Bedford Street, where there's some existing multifamily there. So I started with this downtown area, since that seemed to be a very much of a focus, seeing what, you know, the model would show for this area. And, you know, then see what additional parts were needed to adjust those based on that. By the way, since there's a lot of folks here who may or may not know much about, oh, what happened there? MBTA communities at the board, once I can give like a little brief overview. I'd sort of structured this as like a continuing conversation that already explained a lot of stuff to the board, but I can certainly go back and talk about some more details after if you think that would be helpful.
Good, we'll ask any questions after.
All of this has been up to you.
I want to assume that people here are well-versed. I think many are pretty in tune, but I can't speak for everyone.
Thank you, guys. I just noticed we had some folks in the audience, and I am willing to do that.
If an audience will elected and appointed officials.
It's good to meet all of you.
Not here anymore.
Because I really, that's can't work.
So. I guess another detail is, you know, not knowing much about the site. I initially put a question like, do you want to include this Pond Street school? And you guys were like, no. So I took that out.
Yeah.
So as you can see, before, the Bedford Street area, I had some stuff on both the east and the west sides of the street. It turns out that ended up being a bit too big. Just to quickly summarize, maybe you have your minimum amount of units. And you have to make sure that the total density across all the district is at least fifteen units per acre. So if you make it too big, then you have to start adding extra units to stay above that fifteen units rate of life. So we didn't want to propose a scenario on which you'd have to do that. So we took out this eastern part here, and so it turns out this is about the biggest area you can do. Putting your eight hundred and ninety-eight modeled capacity into this area is just about fifteen units per acre. So, and this is, I think, about sixty-three-ish acres total. I have a table I'll pull up after we do something in this area. So the three main areas, you know, we have Long South Ave, the Pond Streets, industrial zone area, and then that west side of Bedford Street. And I believe I've got, for the Pond Street, I believe I've got the exact same dimensional regulations as the rest of South Ave. I just separated it out because it's technically not contiguous and you might want to think about them differently.
We have a quick question for you.
Yes. Could you identify on the Bedford Street? Because that's Route eighteen, which travels a significant distance in Woodland. What is a cross street you're showing in that red section? Is there, what is that neighborhood? I think that's Glen, so I think that's like six oh two Bedford. And I don't know, six oh two Bedford, so maybe a decor, decor, novel piece?
Glen is the, this is the apartments. And this is the shed place.
Chape and Shed?
Yeah.
Chap and Shed?
Yes.
Okay, so it's Paradise Gardens.
No, Paradise Gardens, throw it down.
Yeah.
This is, this is a shed place. Then you got the swap and you have Paradise Gardens.
So we're heading back towards?
I think this is Peapod, sure.
What?
I think this is the Peapod, former food master.
Johnny Food Master.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're after Cumberland Farms and?
Right, yes.
Yes.
Peapod.
Yeah.
Yep, it's a better path. Heading towards, yeah.
You're crossing like Nellie Rose.
Very.
Okay, okay, thank you first.
Any other question?
I do have a question. After reviewing the law, the intent of law is what to the MBTA? Bedford Street would not need that, so I want to know how that ended up in your require, or in this presentation, whereas Pond Street, even all down Franklin, did not. We just need two reasonable locations to have it. Because it is a, if you read the intent of the law, the arguments, it is about making sure people have housing that might not need a home, clockway, have a car.
Yep.
And Bedford Street seems to be, why, why do we have something so abstractly on the other side of town? And then you excluded very, very viable lots in a definitely called Pond Street and absolutely Franklin, because we already have ones that go all the way down there. Why have you excluded those? Was that part of a requirement and someone asked you to exclude those?
Let me answer the question.
Okay.
If you get answered, Tyler?
Yeah, so, I can't believe, so I'll start with, you're right about the stated intent of the law. The way the guidelines are written makes it somewhat flexible. There, it's like a half mile radius around the train station, and you only have that circumference of your units in that radius. And the rest, you can sort of designate in other potentially appropriate locations across town. And the women happens to have not a ton of developable land right in the radius, because there's a lot of wetlands in the middle of that mile, which I'm not showing that well on this map.
I know where the wetlands are, but a lot, I know also that you've missed out on land that isn't, if wetlands are shifted, you can take a lot and, you know, replace wetlands in the land. I guess, I guess what I'm saying, why have you chosen Bedford Street, which also has wetlands, at similar rates, and not down Pond Street? And down Franklin, no? Right next to the T station, the town owns land. It's kind of in a, in a flux state. We just have to accept it. But we own land right along the T station. And then we have industrial lots that are actually being considered for build that are completely dry, that are left out within a half mile. Was there instructions to exclude this?
Not explicitly, so I, you know, so I said, I mentioned why you might have sites outside of the radius. But in terms of why this scenario ended up the way it did, the way you sort of started the process was, meeting with the board, a good way to start, he's thinking about where you might want his own development family, he's thinking about where some existing multifamily area begins. So we identified a few, like, significant sites of multifamily across the town, and that area Bedford Street was one. You know, sometimes it's good to, you know, spread things out to different neighborhoods, so all densities aren't concentrated just in one place. Sometimes it's fine to do it that way. It all just depends on what local priority is on. So all of that is to say that there's really no reason you couldn't extend it on Franklin Street more in that area and take Bedford Street out. It would be bad.
What boards did you meet with, with these decisions remain? So this board decided to extend past the recommendation that the MBTA can do and not keep within walking distance?
We were presented with three options.
Oh, yeah.
And we kind of just, you know, went through the three options and picked and choose a little from each to come up with this final. Ben?
Yeah, and the reason we punted on the Myrtle Ave is because it's already dense. It's the largest apartment complex in the town, and that area would not really mesh what we're trying to do with this. So we punted that, and what's left is the long strip on South Ave and this block of, on the other side of Bedford Street.
And Franklin wasn't included at all? All those lots.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ben, yeah.
And another thing that we looked at is, there's a lot of single-family homes. And why should we try to push people out of single-family homes when we have areas that are, we could have a significant, gets things without, you know, if you go down Franklin Street, you're going to have to take three or four homes to get an acre before you can even develop something. So you're going to have to take people's homes to do it. Where this way here, we're looking at businesses, we're looking at existing, the old Chuffet, that's in part of it, in the area on Pond Street up there, that's, so we're staying away from existing family homes, single-family homes.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask for a point of clarification there. As I'm looking at this map, and all, South Ave is where single-family homes are very densely, as you described. And then we look over at Franklin, where large open lots are. That is the absolute reverse of what was just said. So, and I guess I'm hoping that we meet these requirements as closely to the letter without skirting the law, hope that we hired somebody and use public money, and say, you know, I won't buy that, so public money to meet the requirements of the law and not just sort of kind of this skirt it, that we're meeting it. We're providing housing that is diverse and clubs and walking distance to T, so people don't need a car to live here.
Yep.
You know, and that's kind of what I'm asking, so that when, when we go to get, we already lost out on opportunities for money for not meeting this law related to the game. So I'm hoping that when, when we, every step we take, we're now on point and we're working to meet the requirements of this law. I don't know if anybody watched the Channel Five editorial on what this law's about and why they're doing it, and why it's so important for both business for the state and communities to meet it and to work with it. So working around it or skirting it or trying to find different ways is.
But one reason that we decided to go around South Ave was for that reason with the train station. And that's why we decided to take off the, go to the other Myrtle Street, and there was another one. I forget the name of this. I'm not, I don't know all the street names, that's what.
It was a satellite location.
Yeah, there was like two or three satellite locations. So we tried to condense it into two locations instead of having three or four locations scattered around the town.
Yeah, I saw the middle school and whatever.
And then Park, Park Street, we couldn't do anything with it because that zone can't be used for this reason.
And what was the reason for Park Street?
I can't.
Backyard school.
Yes.
As a contingency, as a liability.
Yes. So we had to take that off, and we had to, but that's when we added on a little more on Franklin coming down. We do have a, someone come in, wants to do one of these subdivisions down off of Franklin Street by the high school already.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
If, if you have town-owned land within the district, if a developer wants to build, is the town required to sell that land?
Can you know, Justin?
No, so the way that the guidelines handle town-owned land is sort of, by default, they assume that it's not built with multifamily. But then you can go in to the model and you can override that. And to do that, they'll want to see some sort of evidence, whether it's inclusion in the housing production plan, some like existing, like, document discussion about that site as having multifamily housing potential. Then they'll be like, okay, the town has demonstrated that this is at least a potential serious location for housing. So by default, it will assume that public land doesn't produce housing, but you can override that if you have a reason.
But this isn't true, I guess, Justin, you would know better than me. That town-owned land, the town just sitting on, is very, very buildable, although needs to have some contamination cleanup that we're not real sure about. That is very, very, it's, it's potentially a very valuable piece of land.
So legal parcel?
Yeah, the legal shoe.
Yeah.
And the town is just sitting on it because they're not real sure what they want to do with it.
So Kathy, do we, does the town actually own that? Or is it just in a bizarre?
We're not accepting it for certain reasons. I mean, for, but for all intent purpose, the town.
It's a little and both.
But is that, is that not included here?
I don't believe.
No, it's not.
That'll be on the other side under twenty-seven, number twenty-seven kind of, right by this T center.
Right side, I don't have a loose section.
Yeah.
Isn't that?
Next side, other side of the T center.
Yeah, yes.
This side here, back here, in here.
Yes.
It is a river right between there and.
Right, so originally, where the plan was first presented, this wasn't included, even this plan, it is included, because there is some islands up here. But the majority of this in here is wetlands. So you really can't include the wetlands in here. But where the.
I don't remember how many acres there were.
It was significant acres that the, the regal, the regal shoe building and complexes were originally sitting on.
Well, I have an aside.
Yep.
I just joined through the Old Colony Planning Council a brownfields committee, made up of several towns who have identified brownfields in their jurisdiction. And the mission of the committee is to get funding to have these places, you know, remediated. So we're at the infantile stage of doing so, but that is being addressed. Just a second.
Actually, that's a parcel that was identified in the bylaws against these grants.
Right, right.
John?
Yeah, I'm John Goldos, I'm a junior junior CBA. So let me just ask a couple of background questions and then suggestions. So, because it relates to that regal parcel. So how is, in determining what parcels the state will count for this, how are things like environmental issues addressed? Because how would the state know whether it's contaminated or not? Is, can, you know, can you put that in there or not, or?
To my knowledge, I don't believe this compliance model accounts for contamination in any way. It accounts for designated wetlands, you know, sort of the land. I, I can double check, but I'm not sure of.
Those are on the state G I S plan, so.
That, that's how they base it, off the state G I S data. So if there's something that's not in there, I don't.
Okay, okay. And then the other, and I'm broadly familiar with a lot of the MBTA communities' requirements and moderating this in the guidelines. I'm right that they, they won't count non-containing lots in the, in the calculation, and that's an issue that we have in this area because we've got a lot of old lots that are.
That is correct. So when I show you the basic dimensional standards used to model it, if you go into the X-I model, you put in all the parcels, you put in the basic, you know, dimensional data, and then that old background map and splits out a guess for how many units. You're right, if there's a lot that's below the minimum lot size, it will just give us that. So as we're doing this, we sort of adjusted the minimum lot size to like what, you know, given these other dimensional standards, what would it have to be? That's above, we have to make up, it depends on.
So that's, you know, that's some of the comments I had, it's, it's sort of, it's a general comment. If I'm correct, that you're proposing that we, for this overlay, and this would be an overlay district.
Yes.
Yes, that we basically go to kind of, well, there are only six thousand square foot lots there, we're going to make that the minimum lot size in order to, to maximize the number of lots that we can count. I'd go in the other direction. I'd say, you know, our underlying zoning is mostly ten thousand square feet in the area. That's what we should stick to, and to extent that that means we lose some lots, let's make it up with other properties. And the properties that I was going to suggest, and I think be better than counting, I'm concerned about Bedford Street because, yeah, we have apartments there already. We don't necessarily want more. If there's, if somebody's willing to have commercial, you know, buildings there, that's what we'd rather have. But, you know, I, I was thinking of the area along Essex Street between the DPW building and the, and the train tracks. It's Sacony's, Steve Cacciatore's property, the Bouncy House property, the industrial property process street. Massay was operating out of the VFW building.
Yeah.
Did those, be, first of all, they're large properties.
Those are property.
Yeah. They're all large properties, so, you know, multifamily could be there without, you know, really being shoehorning it in. Then there's no residential property around, no single two-family residential property around it.
Would that be outside the half mile?
I don't know.
That's what I was just thinking when you were saying it.
It's okay for hundreds of thousands of miles.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's half the distance, right? Because Willow Apartments is a mile and a half. And that, and that red section is not, four point five.
You could do with it, you could keep the lot size at ten thousand at least. You maybe wouldn't need Bedford. You maybe wouldn't need Bedford Street. And I guess, and I just think it makes sense from a planning perspective.
Sure.
Those properties aren't gonna be, you know, industrial properties forever.
Yep. Brendan, do you have some?
Thank you for that, John, because you're, you're probably right about that. No, no, nothing to add in particular to that. It's just a matter of the idea of that is a lot of dead space where, in that area that you're talking about. And I don't think it's that far, right? I mean.
It's walkable.
Some, some of it's got to be a half mile. If it replaces the Bedford Street properties, it's closer to the M E T A than, than those properties are.
Yep.
Yeah, I, um. I'm a fan of as much as we can build, the better, but.
You know, Pine Street got upgraded, then. Because.
Right, yeah.
I think you probably, you know, that property that you proposed adding on industrial way.
I don't know towards, I mean, there was somebody who came to the town, was talking about potential friendly forty B and. You know, those, those were some evidence, said, go ahead, great idea. And then it just dropped, dropped out. But I think that property even, I mean, you could even zone the rest of industrial way for this, well, for like here. But definitely I think the properties on Essex Street would be a good, it'd be a good site for multi-family.
Just a note to support that. When we're thinking about traffic, I don't know if this is something I have to think about. But coming down, going down that way is better than going down Bedford. So anything on Bedford is just gonna clog that, that's being built up. But kind of taking it down a little bit to down the road, right, and down Essex, traffic wise.
Yeah, it's not much traffic now.
Yeah, that's a better, mainly traffic wise.
This is what we came up with with the three scenarios we were proposed by Tyler with the last meeting. And this was just the updated version of what we came up with. So.
The town's priorities are elsewhere, no problem?
Yeah, and I, and I, in a way, you know, beyond, you know, I am thinking politically too. We gotta go to town meeting and get the property and prove it. That if we can, that's one reason I'm concerned about having any lot size smaller than what's there now. I think you wanna be able to go to town meeting and say, we're not changing the underlying zoning anyway. You own any of these properties here, you can use them just like you'd use them before.
Yeah.
We're just allowing property owners here an additional use in these areas. And we're not, we're not tampering with other things. I think that's an easier to sell approach and to say, well, we gotta reduce lot size to six thousand. And, and if that means you also have to say, you know, because the state won't count this lot and this lot and this lot, this is why we made it. We have to go a little bit bigger, but I think people will understand that. But I think if you stop saying, we're gonna put a multi-family house on the six thousand square foot lot, I think that's a problem.
Right.
And that might be like one, like two units, but still, I, the point is, I think, I believe for this, the minimum lot size is like eight thousand. But like again, like you said, you want to keep it at ten thousand?
Yeah, the existing and the general businesses and general residents is ten thousand, so. Some people might want it to be more, but I, I'm not sure about this.
Anybody else have any, anyone add or? That was the board.
No, well, I wasn't at the first meeting, but my original thought was kick it from the train station. Take the, where the decedent's place is and just go straight back to Essex Street.
Yes, I mean, take in the whole industrial park.
And we're not doing any spot zoning or anything, it's all contiguous. The thing is, it's not necessarily like you say that they're gonna be housing units built. It's just they have the right, I have right to do it. That is a, that's a good solution. And it gets us away from a lot of the, not my backyard type thing.
Oh, I do, I just have to say, in the interest of disclosure, I have an apartment. I, I rented an apartment in a three-man building that's in, in the, in the area here. So I'm not saying anything pro con about that.
So the direction I've heard is, rather than, you know, the Bedford Street area, sort of connect this to, take this down Essex Street. And make it all contiguous, not necessarily get a, just move the district down Essex Street. Until we sort of join all those areas and see.
That's going up, that's going up right through here, correct?
Yeah, right where it says on that.
That's on the street.
So this is industrial way, you can fill this area. Is that the rotary?
This is corporate over, which is a walking path.
It's not a marriette, but.
Okay.
Yeah, just trying to just point out the hill. Yeah, so it's kind of like off, off there.
Right up there, it's, I don't know if you have it.
I'm not the best with the town.
Yeah, you know, with that is.
This is a cemetery, I think just ready to be passed that probably.
Okay.
But you've got the park.
Right here.
I'll get out of the way. Pretty big, this is a wall. This is the whole, over town right here.
Right, so everything from the park, this way.
Yes.
So we're not, this is all industrial.
Yeah, this is six, six or one, this side.
So take the industrial zone. Which is on this map here. Is basically this area here.
Yeah, it's already in red.
So if you take what's red pretty much into here, then that covers it.
Take that off and Bedford Street.
Yeah, basically all the industrial is on mine.
Can you also, if you're going that way, can you go down right through, particularly because we own the land there and it's right next to the T?
But do we, didn't we just, did we not, not own that yet?
Even if we don't.
I'm just asking, I'm just, I'm not driving up.
Why couldn't we still own it?
Yeah, but why can't we?
We, we have to, there's a guideline of like acreage and a certain amount of acres and stuff. I know it went to that.
I think there's, there's, there are larger lots than the ones that are going down Bedford there.
Which, which, which is the regal burned down regal building on that map?
Right next to the T.
I thought that twenty seven side. I think it's up into your right lots.
It's a small.
So what is?
This is a lot of wetlands.
Yeah, but is.
It goes the length of the T station is what I learned.
Yeah, but there's a lot of wetlands.
So what is, what is this? This is the old, the old Regal, they wear Bostonian.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally.
And then this is just the, there's nothing there.
Isn't that, isn't that, I thought that was.
I think that's a problem, isn't it?
I thought that was.
This strip here is the, is part of this large parcel.
This whole pass, this is one pass.
Yeah, this is all one parcel, we just, we just took the, when our judgment, there was a body.
The four acres that are buildable.
So that's basically.
Yeah, that's what we said last time.
And I realized a lot of businesses went down here.
Right.
But to the extent to go, why not include it and just exclude the number of acres that are wet and dilapidated.
Huge issue. Okay, so.
Because the total amount of acres was an issue, it had to be under a certain amount of total acres, correct?
It doesn't have to be under a certain amount of acres. Because when you go large enough, then you have to start zoning for more units. That's, you know, politically less sample, I suppose.
Todd, can you repeat that please? I'm sorry, you just said if you go a lot.
Yeah, so.
There's a ratio.
Yeah, so there's a few like separate but related marks you have to hit. There's a certain number of total units that you have to have the capacity for. And, you know, the H L C has formulas for all of these, how they derive them for each count. So you need to have a certain number of units, uh, zoned for. You have to have a certain minimum size. And then all of that put together, you have to have a district wide total density of at least fifteen units per acre. So if you make the district like really, really big, let's say you like make this a hundred acres. You can, it's fine, but, you know, the state's not gonna be mad for doing more. But, you know, to reach that fifteen units per acre, because the area is so much bigger. You have to zone for, you know, probably several hundred more units to achieve that. The requirement, what was the requirement is eight hundred ninety-eight. And so a lot of scenarios where you don't have to go above that number and obviously the town can, it wants to.
So you're giving the option, sorry, the option to meet that eight ninety-eight at this point. And then, of course, it would be up for discussion. Okay, this is how we meet it. And then anyone could choose to say, oh, should we stretch here or there?
Yeah.
So then, why don't you cut short more densely populated? Like you mentioned, keep away from densely populated areas. Looks like all down South Ave for a period is densely populated. Is there a reason why you wanna keep that in but not put Essex Street?
Because it's like.
If I made.
Yeah.
The rural street apartments, okay, captures that.
Yes.
But the thing is, we may shrink that on South Ave if we pick up the area behind. And we may have very little on South Ave.
Okay.
That is true, yeah. If we keep the lot size at ten thousand, then South Ave, a lot of that district of South Ave may not be a great fit. Because a lot of that would be sort of dead space. It'll hurt your density without contributing anything. So I'll have to figure out which of those exactly will be non-conforming and if there's a configuration that makes sense. Uh, you know, to keep some of South Ave, there is an area that seems to make sense. But expanding it up into the Essex Street area, I think would alleviate the pressure to keep all those small lots, yeah.
And eliminate Bedford Street.
Yeah, that, I, I, I've got that down.
Yeah.
I don't mean to be too contrarian here, but we don't have to eliminate anything. If we decide one area is desirable, it does not mean another one is not desirable.
But you don't wanna have your area too big. Because then you have to add, you wanna meet the intent of the block. So we could sell the whole town and then you're, you know, it's not a big deal. You just have dense population all over the place, so.
I think the goal is at nine hundred.
There's, there's politically difficult and politically impossible.
I mean, I think what you, you are talking a bit political. That you don't want to go too much above nine hundred because then you have to depend on it. I was gonna ask though a couple other, like these lots here. Why did you not, why not say those? Are those like, I know this is like the, it's an industrial building by a landscaping company or something, right? But, you know, to me, anything that side of Crescent Street.
Yeah, I said, I know some of them were included to include existing into the density, into the numbers.
Some of us that already qualify, so that was considered.
Some of what?
Some of our buildings that we have qualified and meet the numbers. It's not like we have to build eight hundred ninety-eight.
Right, right.
Right, Kyle?
That's correct.
But I mean, I, you know, I'd rather see that than maybe some, you know, some of these off.
But some of that, I think what's confusing is some of that blue area has, has existing. So they need the law, so they meet this eight ninety-eight. What we're trying to create is areas where it can expand to get to the eight ninety-eight.
Right, right. But I'm just thinking, these are, those are single family house or, no, I guess some of them are multi-family.
Yeah, that's true.
But, I mean, this whole area is really underdeveloped. And, I mean, I would have been, I guess he was, zoning the Regal Shoe buildings. But practically, that's probably not, not going to happen. I mean, now a lot of places going in there, there's some environmental issues there. People who looked at it, I would have loved to have seen that, but that was my dream and it didn't happen.
Right.
But to get more people, they're gonna see everywhere.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm just looking at those and saying, why not those? Not, you know, not necessarily.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
If you include the, if you include the Myrtle or Marble Street, does that, their two hundred and some units not toward your nine, your eight hundred and some?
I believe so, yes, that's, yes.
I thought, I thought that was one more.
The state doesn't really care what's been built.
Right.
It's just calculating.
But it's all numbers.
Yeah, you can essentially, you can essentially think of it as counting, what the state wants to see is, is this area zoned for over many units? Um, it's just easier to zone an area that already has those units. Rather than, potentially than one that doesn't. So while the units are there, not, they just want to see the zoning. So it makes sense perhaps to, you know, make what's there already.
I got you, buddy.
So when we're considering this law, one of the things that says it can't be exclusionary is that. They have, so two and one bedrooms are exclusionary to families, families of protected class. That is only two bedrooms. So that might be something that they might wanna consider. At this point, I'll put these places that you're, that are only two bedrooms.
Because median average is over two point five.
We're gonna have to be exclusive, zoning for those families and that's gonna cost us.
You're right about that, you're not allowed.
But they don't take up any more space, you can just build.
Have controls on the number of bedrooms we have for that reason, to make sure that, you know, family has.
So right now, you should know that the building that you have in there is only two bedrooms, two bedroom.
I think if it was, if it were easy, we'd just draw a circle a half a mile around the T station.
That's what I'm.
I don't think that's possible though.
That's, that's the Brandon method.
Yeah. Just give us a radius.
I just ran out of words.
Circle wheel is the conference.
Yes.
I don't think that's.
But I mean, your response to Wells Mary, though, you gotta think of this as, but, you know, yeah, there's a lot of, there's one and two bedroom houses, family houses here. But this would allow adults to come in, buy a couple, line it down, put up a multi-family. So it, you know, what's, what's there now doesn't really matter.
That's right.
If we had a catastrophe and the Ross and Shoe burned down.
Yeah.
Somebody could come in, put the same number of units in with three bedrooms. Because it would meet the density requirement.
Like I said earlier, with, with the cell phone tower, this is where a gentleman already brought a proposal in, that he wants to do the high density.
But that's, that's block zone.
Right, that's not, so that's up to Mr. Rosen.
Please.
No, I know, I know.
Hold on, can you repeat that, Bob, I'm sorry, who is it?
Where they want to put the industrial.
With towers.
He, he, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
You said a name, who was it?
Living standard or something like, it was, I'm not sure who it was.
It's right across from the, on Franklin, right across from, pretty much. It's closer, yeah, it's closer than the current Franklin's street. That's the kind of the loss.
There's an issue with that property because of that cell tower. It's a civil, it doesn't.
The drop zone.
I dropped some balance when it's gonna be commercial, but when it's residential, you're gonna have a different. So if you're sleeping there all night, it's a different, it's a different thing. Okay, so it's the cell tower that prevents that.
Yeah, he wants to come in with the proposal for something, he's working on something, but he hasn't come anything official yet.
But that's block zone too.
Correct.
It's not contiguous, you can't just put something off on the side, one person, one block.
Yeah, it's gotta be contiguous.
Here's John.
One more question, and this, the, I know initially the state wasn't going to allow you to include anything that's zoned for multi-use. You know, commercial on the ground floor, apartments above. And then, then they changed that and now you can count a certain number to that?
So basically how that works is from the beginning, the guidelines said, you can't require a retro commercial.
Right.
The, the logic gave me that defeats the purpose, so you know, you're just a multi-family. You can allow mixed-use development as an option, as long as there is the option to do pure multi-family. Um, so that's always been the case. It's changed a little, but it's, the way they did it is sort of complicated. Basically, uh, it would require any like required mixed-use to basically meet all of these same standards anyway. So like if you don't have an existing mixed-use district that already meets those requirements, we have sort of not been recommending.
So, so our mixed-use district would not meet that requirement because we require commercial on the ground floor?
Wow.
Well, you also have limited bedrooms, you don't have family.
I don't know.
Makes bedrooms too.
Yeah.
Alright, so basically, we're not getting any credit for a multi-use district, okay?
No question, Brendan.
But you could overlay it with this.
Yeah, yeah, but, but it doesn't, I thought if we got credit for those, then the requirements for this district would reduce for that off the table.
It's also not a problem if a developer came in and chose to do that mixed-use development instead of whatever.
Right, right, they're not changing that.
It's actually a huge problem. But that's outside of my question. I just wanted to do a quick recap. So when we last talked, we were, we were given the absolute bottom. So when we last talked, we were, we were given the absolute bottom numbers. And that was eight ninety-eight was the min cap.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-seven acres was the min dist. Min gross density fifteen per AC.
Yeah.
And twenty percent of that eight ninety-eight totaling one eighty and seven point four acres totaling one hundred total units within half a mile, right?
Uh, that is all correct.
Okay. So without being an ideologue, that sounds inefficient. And then if we pull, this is not a dig at you, I'm just putting it out there. So if we took this one eighty and we found whatever other land might squeak in as qualified, I mean, are we looking at slashing that in half and building ninety units of people to walk to the T? That's ridiculous, my opinion. Not a dig at you, it's just a dig at geography.
Yeah, well, this scenario already has way more than that within that station area. You've got at least like thirty acres.
Oh, great, great, I, I just wanted to.
You've got at least like thirty acres in there, yeah, and they, they have a formula they apply to every town.
Oh, sure, sure.
They get that, I don't think they were really thinking about, in fact, I know they weren't thinking about that.
Oh, well.
Um, but yeah, we're already sort of, in terms of the station area requirements, pretty much ignoring those mechanisms going ahead this morning, so.
Thank you, sir. Good, thank you, thank you.
For exclusionary purposes, if the overlay is on, so there's so much stuff that doesn't have anything goes on it. If the overlay is counting some of our builds as, and you're saying, oh, this building has to burn down to make family housing, it creates another obstacle to make it burn down, so I think.
You're taking it out of context what I said.
I guess, I guess, I, I'm not, I.
I'm just saying that any piece of property that's in the district can be taken down, rebuilt.
Alright, now let me finish.
That doesn't exclude it, it's just saying, anything in the district can be bought or redeveloped according to the law.
Okay, so currently, I think it was said that a lot of the builders are building one and two bedrooms. So when they're going in, there's a distinct possibility that they are primarily going to seek land, the ones that are experienced, and that is cleared, and build primarily one and two bedrooms. Right, you can't control this. And right now, we have one and two bedrooms that are already built. You run a risk of sort of guiding your builds to only one and two bedrooms. And at the end, all this building and all of this, and you're inviting new citizens in, we will not meet the required diversity. And in the end of all of this, our town is at risk of a disparate impact. Meaning, no matter what choices you make or what anybody else did, the ultimate goal is to have the diversity in place. So in the outcome of this, so to include that in your zoning might end up being a way to sort of force, or I think it is a bad choice, that's what I think.
Okay, may I counter that? We're talking industrial land, adding a lot of industrial aid here. Single family, double family homes are not included by right in an industrial property. It has to go be a zoning issue. So the zoning board in its privy could say, the only thing that's allowed in multifamily housing per the overlay district was you keep it commercial, industrial. So the chances of somebody coming in and putting in these three unit condos with two bedrooms in that area is very small.
So we're basically saying the same thing?
Yeah.
So we're saying.
But, but I'm not, but what I'm also saying is, if we include the Boston shoe, somebody else can come in and tear that down and build additionally if it's financially feasible for them.
Okay. Hopefully not. So zoning, so zoning is not going to meet three bedrooms? And for point clarification, you said you will not allow the industrial zone, the zoning won't allow industrial zones to build family housing, is that?
In the bylaws, the way it's written now, you can't build residential property in an industrial zone.
But you can rezone industrial to residential, correct?
Then it would have to go before town meeting to rezone.
Okay.
Right, and what you're, I, I'm hearing what was coming from both you. And as much as I would love to run off with my big plans to save the world, what we're doing right now is discussing overlay. And it's going to probably be another step, and there will be more discussions. But I think our goal should be to rezone as much industrial as we possibly can because most of it, we're not doing anything with. It's just there.
I mean, it's, it's being used, Brendan, but I think.
You, you, this parking, parking garages and.
Over time, those uses.
Rusty, built, yeah.
Are not gonna last, and.
I mean, they're not factories.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, you know, I, I think probably everybody in this room is sympathetic to multifamily housing with, and what's the, you know, we may not like all the ins and outs of this law, but it's like, we can live with it, or we have some sympathy to it.
That's good.
We gotta go to town meeting.
Yep.
And I think the least infringement on existing single and two family residential areas that you have in this proposal, better.
Yep.
I just like to say, I support more housing overall. I know Rosemary is focusing on families, you know, three bedrooms and allowing for families, more family housing. But I look forward to a day where I can release my single family home back to a young family, maybe find a desirable, downsized, small, compact, you know, tiny, yeah, in town.
In town.
It's a, so. It wasn't, I never said that. My concern is that we haven't met that and that we will at the end of it not, if we build only the two and three bedrooms, we're gonna be in trouble with the state. We won't win it, it's, it is, it cannot be exclusion to fit, cannot be exclusionary to families. So we end up in disparate impact at the end of this. And the people who are talking to her at the state house are saying, and, and what we need most is family housing. So whatever, they're going to be looking, did you, you can't build for just single people and singles.
And then the zoning won't require.
I just wanna, I, so you said if we only build higher density?
No, just two and three.
Or if we're not building three beds?
I mean, two, one and two.
Okay, one and two, okay, thank you, yeah.
Three beds.
I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Do you have a little bit of your opinion on that?
Um, well, I can tell you what the guidelines say, and they're very explicit, that you must allow those, you know, higher bedroom count units. That's, that's, that's really what they said, but, you know, you gotta, you gotta run for.
Yeah, right, of course.
No matter what, whatever district, whatever we do decide to overlay, still all comes down to someone coming in and wanting to do that
Yep.
to begin with, which may not have ever happened.
And that's, that's a big question for you.
Which we're all talking like, like probably or whatever you wanna say anyway. The fact of this is to pretty much just find a district, find where we can do this, if possibly do this, and if somebody wants to do this. But at least we have the option, we have the land, and we have the overlay and the zoning for them to do so if they desire. That's my take on this entirely.
And, and let's, and I guess to bring back to the original statement I said, if we're finding zoning and three bedrooms must be required, and we're taking a big chunk of that with already built two bedrooms, we're dwindling down the possibility that we're gonna have the disparity bedroom levels, like, that's all I said.
Yeah. No, it's a little catch twenty-two in there, every, every way you turn.
I know, that's, just keep it in your mind.
No, I totally understand, so.
I would support excluding the existing.
We're not against exclusionary.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep. You know, I think the town came to us from Justin, from his aspect of this, to get, start just moving this forward to, cuz it's what, we had the train station, and basically, it's what we're supposed to do, it's a lot.
Yeah.
That's how I looked at it, so.
Actually, before I run off to my meeting, if I could jump in.
Yes, absolutely.
For Tyler, so I know, um, the grant that funds this is, uh, Brendan.
That's why I told you about the talk to you.
Yes.
Why did you do that?
Um, we, I believe, uh, Kathy's applied for the MHP grant to continue this process into next year uh, for drafting a bylaw. Um, I imagine we could attempt to retain the bare planning group and you, um, since you're already pretty invested, but we just did, okay, use your mind there.
Yeah, okay, so you've applied for it?
I, she at least has the process to apply, she has the, yeah, she's ready to go, yeah.
Okay, Kathy. I'll ask.
So reach out to her, she'll know.
I'll ask Kathy about it, that's true, cuz we, we've alerted, uh, Mass Housing Partnership that, uh, you told us we were thinking about doing that at least, so that's on their radar, it's on our radar.
Yep.
Um, if you would like us to continue helping you, we are happy to do so.
That's my intent, so, and I don't plan to world disagree with you in the world.
What grant was that, Justin? What was it called?
Mass Housing Partnership.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's who's giving the grants. It's, um, probably the name of the grant, uh, I believe it's just, uh, three A, you know, the, the legal citation for this law, uh, technical assistance, basically.
Thank you.
Yep.
So it's my take from you, you'd like, the town would like to continue with this.
And, well, we at least need to put something before town meeting to comply, and we don't have any professional staff.
Right.
So we have to have a deadline by, so for town meeting.
So we got Tyler. We would need a town meeting, whether we make the May town meeting with the, this requires a, a plain or public area as well as submitting zoning bylaw. Um, so it's probably good to map out that timeline of events, no one would have to have a final bylaw prepared to see if we could meet May. If not, we'll need to get a special, probably next fall.
Okay.
So those are two options, really.
It's the end of December, it's a deadline, right?
Um, Melissa, did we work through the timeline for end of December next year?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
But do we take a fourth of the timeline for the other?
Kathy and I are doing it this week.
Perfect.
So I can get one for guys.
It'll also apply to this.
And, and do we know, this is just a question I'm throwing out there, I don't know the answer. Do we know if builders or developers have approached anyone about land currently in these zones to build anything else?
The other we know about the gentleman who came in on Franklin Street.
On streets currently for sale.
Yeah.
So there might be people who are looking at that.
Yeah.
I think it's for four million, all down court on street, so.
Which.
That's on street, you said?
Yeah, right down on street, it is.
Sixty-sixth, the Green, the Green, the Park.
Yeah, that, that already took it.
Okay.
Yes, and there was a group that came in on that, and they were proposing only, um, two hundred and twenty units, but it didn't get off the ground.
We, we invited him back, right?
It was probably, we would not have.
Yeah, I know, that.
Um, it was, it was gonna be a friendly forty B, so I think some of them would have been, yeah, some, some would have been, yeah.
You see, that's a, he was pitching a backdoor four, oh, I, I mean friendly, forty B. I mean friendly.
Yeah, Tyler, do you have enough to go back, to go forward with, with what we've done tonight?
Oh, yes, or, so, yeah, so obviously, um, we wanna do another round of, you know, fixing the modeling.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's more than we initially thought, but whatever, the needs of the project evolved. So that is mine.
Of course.
We will do, we wanna get a good, um, you know, a good proposed district that, you know, the town as a whole can get by.
I think we should include area landscape into it, and this part of the lot, take a little bit more of this lot here.
Right.
Yeah.
And then go back as far as you can up to Essex Street, and then just take something on Essex Street that brings us to our area, gets us out of eight hundred and ninety houses or whatever it is. I don't think we should expand beyond what we really need, we meet the intent of the law.
Yeah. Eliminate Bedford Street.
What?
Eliminate Bedford Street.
Or.
Eliminate Bedford Street.
Or, or at least, um, for the time.
Yeah, to take a look.
Not rezone all the way.
See what it looks like.
I don't think it would hurt to rezone some on the closer side, um, whether people want to build there, or what the town thinks, um, I.
Well, the, the big thing is, you said that.
It's a tough sell either way.
Justin, thank you so much.
But, but I agree with, with, with you on the South Ave sections, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely, around and then up.
And, you know, my advice would be, um, it's very easy to get wrapped up in trying to include every, uh, you know, multifamily housing opportunity in this. You know, this is just one program of many, um, you know, you don't need to stress yourselves to include every potential good multifamily site in this.
It's a work in progress.
So how long would it take you just to include those properties and send us back, uh, something on a, with an email or something, just to impugn us an idea?
Yeah, let's see.
Sometimes.
You're up to your, am I connected to your files?
And I'm not saying you have to come to a meeting, just send us back something that we can see. This is what we were thinking of, this is what we were thinking.
Um.
We're meeting in a couple of weeks, but we, you know.
In a couple of weeks, so, uh, the, the twelfth?
Yeah, that's our next, that's our next skip, yeah, the next schedule meeting is the twelfth.
Yeah.
I'm gonna meet the twenty-sixth.
That, uh, that makes sense, yeah. I, let's see, um, probably not like, uh, like a super detailed, like, math right up,
No, not.
but certainly like a map of a new area, like the table of what the municipal regulations could make it work. I think you can have that by your next meeting.
Yeah, that would help, and then we could say, yeah, you're on the right page, you're not on the right page.
Okay.
Um.
Let's make it out of that.
Thank you.
December twelfth, I think.
Thanks for stopping me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so now I did have, you know, some dimensional stuff to go over, but it's for altering the district so much, that stuff is probably gonna change as well.
Sure.
Um, you know, it might be some, I mean, I can, last, just to give you an idea of, for this configuration, what worked, and maybe it'll be similar.
Oh, it punted your court again, if you know what it's like.
Oh, no, hand did it.
No, I, 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 I tell you now, I need to, you know, gotta keep some privacy here. This is my work.
You don't want everything on the screen in front of everybody.
Yeah, we have no idea what, I'll make that, I don't know. Uh, so.
Alright, there we go.
So I'll just point out, like, a few things, we were talking about, um, the minimum lot size, that's this row here. Um, you know, I think we talked, you know, we, we talked through this, you know, uh, this is what I can rock it down to, to make this piece work, and that's obviously gonna change maximum building height, keeping it, uh, three stories across the board. I don't think you, um, allow any higher than that really anywhere in town.
You also made that dating one to ten thousand, correct?
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's the mid direction, yes, so.
Okay.
So a lot, a lot of this stuff is gonna change, but just to give you an idea of like, the neighborhood we're in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, um.
You know, yeah, it's, it's.
What's that again? Yeah, so we, we're, we're try not to have to make the buildings any taller. It's awkward cuz most bylaws do, uh, you know, maximum height in feet, whereas this model does it in stories. I don't know why, don't ask me why, um.
They've got a forty-four.
Three stories, you're not gonna get a forty-four.
Yeah, so, so we're calling that three stories, that's, I think that's pretty reasonable.
And Myrtle is as big as it's gonna get.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the goal there is not to deviate too much. Um, in terms of like your maximum, like building lot coverage, kept that at thirty percent ground floor. Um, there's some, there's a required open space component in your current bylaw. It's like a formula based on the total, like, square footage of multifamily proposed. That kinda doesn't work in the model, so, uh, I just, I just made the number, uh, as high as it could go without screwing up the account. Um, so I can continue to do that as we change the area around. Um, parking spaces per unit, generally like, you know, if you ask, you know, any of us planners, will generally say like, for multifamily, especially here, uh, a transit station, two spaces per unit is too much, one point five, you know, or sometimes even lower if you're running up to the station. But just as a, as a assumption, one point five. Um, I originally forget what's in the Bedford Street column, I wanted to check if two worked in that, cuz it's not right next to the transit station, but we're forgetting that. Um, another relevant one is additional lot area per unit. So right now, in your multifamily regulations, you know, uh, there's a minimum lot size, um, it's like, I think it's like eighty something square feet. That's, that's, you know, that's, that's, that, I can tell you it's gonna be right out, unless we move to only large industrial parcels. Um, that'll work, but you require at least six thousand square feet per additional unit. So, you know, you have the base minimum, and then depending on how many units you're proposing, you need six thousand multiplied by that more. So that is, I don't see a scenario in which that is gonna work with this modeling, but I did see what, if you want to keep an additional lot area per unit requirement. Uh, in this scenario, this was the highest you could go, uh, two thousand or twenty-five hundred. And I suspect that in this new configuration, it would be similar. And then you have the maximum units per acre, by spreading it out more, um, you can keep a lot of it, like literally at that fifteen units per acre. For those of you who, for those of you who haven't been following along, they have this whole, like, formula to figure out the district wide density. It's a little unintuitive, uh, which is why, you know, we see here, make this work, this area is twenty. But I suspect that with the new areas we're adding, we'll probably, we'll probably be able to keep it pretty close to the actual, like, fifteen.
Literally, you, you can sell fifteen because that's what the state requires.
Yeah.
Yes. Go above that, we're, you know.
Well, that's what I tried to say about ratios and all these, think, different things that we're talking about. Well, that's what I tried to say about ratios and all these different things that we're talking about earlier, so.
Yeah, that, that's one of the most unintuitive things to explain to people, and so the more we can avoid having to explain that to people, cause they understandably don't have all the time to wrap their heads around it, uh, like I do, because they're good at paying.
Well, if they have more people here for more feedback.
Yeah, that was, that was really great.
This time, so that was helpful.
Um, so.
Beautiful. Like, everything has to go before everybody, so to have the more people, the more input we can get, makes that job a lot easier.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so the next steps are obviously, uh, we're gonna look at the reconfigured area. Hopefully that'll be something that we can move forward with.
Sure.
Um, uh, in terms of actually writing the zoning, um, this is a key thing to figure out, like, what are the basic dimensional regulations you're okay with? Uh, I'm listing these because these are the ones that the model really cares about to get that number, but you know, obviously there's others. You gotta figure out, uh, you know,
Yeah.
setbacks and frontage and, and, uh, you know, buffer zones and all these things. Um, and I've started writing out recommendations for, you know, is this stuff in your existing bylaw gonna work? Do you need to change it? Uh, you wanna think about, um, what kind of site plan review do we want? Is what's in the bylaw currently good? I I read through it, it doesn't seem like anything in there would be like a problem for this, but but is it, you know, is it adequate for regulating what could potentially be a lot of new development? So thinking about things like that. So there's the, there's the hard numbers that we have to check against the model, that there's all the stuff surrounding it. Um, that will come with an actual fully written out, uh, zoning history.
Okay. So the, I mean, the setbacks and everything is pretty important for all these calculations.
Yeah.
I mean, particularly on a smaller lot, it might really make, uh, multifamily unfeasible to have.
Yeah.
The setbacks that we've probably wanna have, I get, you have to think in terms of reducing objections to the policy.
Yeah.
That's another reason to include some of those bigger parcels in industrial. Big lots. They just, they just would work better for a.
Yeah.
Makes sense. A good sized parcel, a good size number of units.
Yeah, that, that is true. The law is a little weird in that it doesn't actually calculate the setbacks. It just assumes the setbacks are gonna be taken out of like the non-built area, like they assume that.
And space.
Yeah, like they assume at least twenty percent of the lot is just gonna be lost to, you know, setbacks and buffers and things. So what you wanna look at to eyeball it, to make sure it doesn't contradict what's in the model, is, you know, would this, if we look at, um, the building coverage we're allowing, the, I don't know, amount of area we might need for parking, the, does this leave enough room for these setbacks?
Right.
And if so, the state will probably not have a problem. Just the key is like whatever you model, what you write in the zoning has to reasonably rezone, basically.
If you've got a ten thousand square foot minimum.
That's right.
We've got fifteen foot side setbacks, so that's thirty percent right, right there is gone, just the two sides, then you have front, back, or even greater.
Parking.
Uh, plus parking, so yeah, you can help. You're less than fifty percent.
Right.
Um, yeah.
Yield on those.
Yeah, the law, the law sort of naturally like undercounts the number of units for smaller parcels, it overcounts them for larger parcels just through its half. I don't know if that's intentional or not, but it definitely does do that. So hopefully that's not like a huge problem, but we definitely would wanna like before sending this off to the state, you know, maybe take a few lots and like do the math and like figure out, are we representing something that is wildly different from what we're actually allowed?
If you're. A lot of misrepresentation.
But if you're, if you're a property owner, you have a residential area in town, and you've got ten thousand, twelve thousand, um, but you've got a single family there, or you've got a two, two-family, but you've been denied to turn into a two-family because of size and things like that. And then all of a sudden, um, the next street over, it's been rezoned and you can go three family, uh, you know, put four, three families on a, on an acre. Um, your, your blood's gonna boil.
Right.
Yeah.
So another reason to shy away from areas of lots of smaller lots, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 cause that's how I am looking at it from the ZVA point of view, like, for ease, we wouldn't let somebody put a, you know,
Sure.
a single family in a six thousand square foot lot, why would you let them put a three family in? Yeah, so.
Go ten thousand, you can have this.
And it does create pressure on the ZVA there to get variances outside the district, as they're gonna say, but it's just the same size lot.
Yeah, why is he, why don't I?
Yeah, ten thousand the minimum, you know, maybe more than.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense.
I think we have a good cross starting point. This is only the second time you've come back with us with this second, this is only the second proposal, so.
It's true.
So we're just, it's still a work in progress.
But the clock's ticking, so.
No, that's, yeah.
Cause if we can, I, I hope we can go to spring town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am sure, I agree, yes, yes.
I, I. Get voted out. I hate to have this only come up in the fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, do the best.
At least have the fall as a fail-safe. Yeah, to rework something that people don't like.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, pushing this doesn't feel like the right.
Is that which wealth I paid for you to come up with something?
It could just opt in or it could line board, and then nobody gets out until it's done.
How about that?
Right, I don't think there's anything else really to go over tonight. We've got more conversations ahead, but for now, we're good.
Sure. But I think we had a good.
Yeah, definitely good direction.
We got a good input from everybody else, so I appreciate it.
Definitely good direction on the modeling. I'll check with Kathy to see, uh, where the, you know, continuation of the variances have.
The grants, yeah.
Um, my understanding is they're pretty inclined to grant those.
Yeah.
So I don't think it'd be a huge issue.
Sure.
So we can continue working together for months to come. Wouldn't that be nice? Um, alright, now I think I'm all set. Okay.
Alright, you have any questions? You can prejudge Melissa, we can help out with whatever we need.
Yep.
Um, could you email either Kathy or I just the, um, the two things that you were showing us tonight, just so I can attach them with the.
Yes, those are, those are all part of like, uh, memo or something. I can just enter the whole thing.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah.
Anybody, do you have any other questions? Got anyone? No?
Okay.
No, and if you could do the overlay and send it to Melissa, you know, even next week or something, without any of the background, then we can see if you and we are on the same page, if that's possible.
But I mean, just like the outline of the district or?
Yeah, just the outline.
With this number twelve, do we can look at it?
No, I'm just saying big before, if there's something that we really don't want.
Well, we won't be able to communicate with each other.
Yeah, we won't see it. You won't, you won't be able to talk to, you can see it, but you won't be able to work on it with, for the twelve.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Discussion. Okay.
Yeah.
Timeline, but.
Okay. Yeah, look at the December twelfth and then give them feedback.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The example, we'll meet on December twelfth, and I think the next one is what, January ninth? Oh, I mean, exactly, the next one after that, we won't meet on the twenty-sixth, so.
Why don't we meet on the twenty-sixth?
No, I won't be there. No, no, no.
I'll settle for not to come to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
Um, alright, thanks again for bearing with my tiredness.
So that's also timelines work for you for now.
Yeah, I think that's fine, to get your basic, uh, districts.
Alright. Yeah, yeah, it's just like.
Uh, I, I think, I think that is doable.
Alright.
Uh, so yeah, thanks again for bearing with my tiredness.
No problem. Thank you so much.
No, no, it's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's why we keep the gap. Yeah, right, that's, this is the second Tuesday.
Alright.
So, alright, anybody else have anything? Uh, Moshe, what's your?
Moshe, do you?
Second.
Alright.
Not required.
Not required.